I don't know. I really don't.
Yeah, I mean.
I know that as I travel through the, you know, I know Schwartz Creek has got them. I know Grand Lake has got them. I know Linden, I believe Linden's got them, but they're, they're, they're all over the place.
Or in Malheon.
Flashing at you especially coming into a more of a business district or something like that. They do tend to get your attention. I know what you're saying about becoming complacent and just seeing them.
Right, it becomes the norm.
Not paying attention to it. Right.
Like sometimes I use them to check my sitter.
I've never, yeah, I've never seen a study to say, yes, they help, no, they don't help. I know for me, they catch me, they catch my attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
I'm gonna have a cop like that on.
Yeah, yeah, those are, those ones, like that freaked me out one day when I was heading, when, if this was back probably like February before COVID hit. There was someone on, um, West Heagle Road and I was heading to work and I leave super early in the morning for work and I'm like, what the? But I was going like one over down Heagle and it started like, no, seriously, because I didn't want to hit deer and it was winter time and I'm a grandma driving in the winter time. I hate it.
Yeah, the question on the bid sheet is, it says three of them, and just one certification, then you have four mounts for three things, then you have only two battery packs for three things. So I don't, why is there a three, four, two? Is one of them not need a battery pack or what's that?
I think this is two additional battery packs.
They go, okay, for extra.
Right, modular battery powered radar sign, eleven inch display, I'm assuming would come with.
Okay, so just.
The battery pack, right, right.
Okay.
You know, we get cloudy streak, then they're not charging, the sign's dead, you run off and swap out a battery. I, that's an assumption, I, I don't know.
I see it mentions the data collection included. I think that'd be very interesting to find out over a period of time, mornings, nights, weekends, whatever. That it makes a record of all of the speeds. It'd be very interesting to, uh, to, to find out.
Does it let you know who the?
Well, it doesn't tell you who, it just tells you certain cars went by at thirty-five, seventy-five, forty-four.
It would be awesome if I could.
And that could be useful for the sheriff's department.
Yeah, step up and, step up and change patrol times.
Yes, change patrol times, change location.
And that's something that I'm sure we can look into.
Right. Well, we talked about it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to these types of signs. I just don't know that it's the right time to do it right now with, you know, with other things that, I mean, we've got, again, roads. We have, um, the dam to pay for, um, but that's just, that's just.
Good, good point. What, what would be the funding if we were to go forward with this? Where will we, what will we tap for the money?
General funds.
General funds.
You know, just the general fund, huh? And money set aside that we can use at roads. Money's already set aside for roads.
Right, money set aside for roads, but.
General fund, general.
You know, I mean, what is, what is the true cost of the roads gonna be once we get through that P S R study?
Nine thousand dollars for the roads repaired.
Well, I'm not so sure that you have to buy all three, do they? I would just buy one, two.
I, I would, I.
I mean, because if we don't get them, then they're gonna be offered to another municipality, as simple as that. Or somebody else can buy them. But I don't know that we have to take all three.
Yeah, it's a quote from April of nineteen. Didn't they say in one of the prior meetings that they were going to see about boning us though?
Well, I, I know.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, sure, yes, uh-huh, yes.
Yeah, from time to time.
Time to time.
This would be a permanent, this would be like the village own, it would be ours.
I thought last month somebody limit was gonna donate one.
Oh, yeah, it tends to.
Yeah, it would. And was it a good time or was it one of the residents?
There was a resident on East Heagle said, oh, if we didn't give him, he'd pay for it.
I hope he was tricking on that man, but I say that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if he was serious, but.
Send him to bill.
If he was, it, it might be.
Add it to his taxes.
It might be making a phone call, you know, a donation, the charitable donation to, to the village.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to like maybe two. I think three's an excessive for the village of our size. I mean, Hortonville has one, so.
One, if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I mean, I think two would be sufficient for, we can move them around and taking cover pretty much four corners and then.
If, if there's not a discount at any point, uh, seemingly they're approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars eleven, twenty, twenty-eight, eleven.
Well, it says increases or decreases to the following estimated quantity will not affect the bid price, so.
Yeah.
So, you want a table or do you want?
I'm thinking about it.
You wanna buy it, you wanna, whatever you.
I mean, I'm, I, I just don't think that it's, that it's the right time, but I mean, the floor is open to make a motion to.
I'd like to do something with it. It's been talked about for a while, um, and like I said, I, they catch my attention. Uh, I'll make them, make a motion to purchase two of them. Two of them at a unit cost of twenty-six, thirty-six apiece, um, with the shipping of three hundred.
Would you say that two, just two additional backup mounts and maybe one additional battery pack or?
Fifty-five, seventy-two, just quick math. I don't know how to, I don't know that we would necessarily need the battery backup or the quick mount.
Can I say something? If that quote's from April of twenty nineteen, you probably need an updated quote first.
Right, I'm not understanding, I'm not understanding why this says four seventeen of nineteen.
Right, we've talked about it since, is that a typo?
I'm almost wondering because.
Well, Matt's been in contact with the road, and this is came from, this was sent to Matt, recently, that's all.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering that myself.
I would like that out.
It, it was, it was a couple of months. If, if these prices stand today, I'll make a motion for, like I said, doing quick math here. Fifty-five, seventy-two, that'll be two units, at twenty-six, thirty-six and three hundred shipping.
Now, does the, does the county have these like readily available? I mean, do they have to ship them or?
Says bring these deliveries.
Can somebody go and pick it up and save three hundred bucks?
That's Wisconsin.
We're gonna go to Brown here, Wisconsin.
Well, that's why I was, that's why I was asking, is this something like that the county has like readily available?
This comes up every now and then at the Metropolitan Alliance meeting, who has the machines and are they being used? It does come up and if we can find somebody to partner with, we don't mind sharing, we can save some money, but then again, you want it or not. These machines, um, the county does have, uh, a number that they, they loan out, it's like four, maybe six, there's a long waiting list. And when you get a machine like this, you, you put into a spot, you say, we want one for room fifteen, we want one for Ridge Road. And that kind of plays into the priority system. Do our machines available? But chances of getting them out here for more than a couple of weeks are very slim, because they're, they're used in Burton, they're used in high traffic areas. We just, not that high in the pecking order.
Okay, Shannon, you got a half of a motion.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we got a motion.
Pass the board. Do you need a motion from Rebecca, do you?
I need it sent to me.
Yeah. To purchase two at twenty-six, thirty-six plus three hundred shipping.
Right, but then he said five, five, seven, two, is that?
Fifty-five, seventy-two.
Yeah, the fifty-five, seventy-two is just the quick math.
Right, right, not to exceed.
Two units plus three hundred shipping.
Plus the three hundred.
No, including.
Including the three hundred. Total cost should be fifty-five, seventy-two.
Nice board.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. And Tracy, when you're done writing, if you would like to do roll call.
Baraco.
Yeah.
Jimataro.
Yes.
Light.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yes.
McCafferty.
No. Okay, now, moving on to, um, public comments on items not on the agenda. That says you can, you can talk about what you wish. Um, I ask that you keep it to three minutes. You address the chair. Be professional, be nice, keep it classy. So, who's up? I see, I see, I, I see her running around wanting to.
Oh, your head. Whatever you want.
Okay, um, I'll go first, if you don't mind. Um, my name's Jennifer Gibson. I live in Green Ridge Estates, Upper Road. It does get people back. So, but, um, I'm here today to express concerns with, um, actually serious concerns about two dogs that continue to go through an electric fence on our cul-de-sac. We've addressed the issues. It continues to happen. The police have been involved. The only thing they say we can do now is, um, call and have the dogs be taken. I'm a dog lover, so I don't want the dogs just to be taken. I just want the owners to be more responsible. They said the other thing is go to the village, maybe we could get some type of ordinance in place for villages, like the subdivisions like that, stating either the owners have to be out with the dogs. I don't know, I don't know what the solution necessarily is. I'd like to look into other communities to see like Davidson, Hortonville, if they have anything in place. It's been about two years now that the issues just continue to happen and one time is too many of both people, both massive chasing kids down the street, you know, like, it's not.
Have you brought that up to the H O A out there?
We don't have an H O A, so that's another. We have ordinances, which is another, which I understand because in our, you can't have a fence in the front yard. And technically, you're really not supposed to have one in the backyard, even though I know some people do it, and even then I'm like, she did it, I would be fine with that. I know other neighbors would probably complain about the fence. But I think too, the, I don't know if they're even working properly some of the times, or there's been times they go through and they're not even on. But there's, try to be open discussion and it's not going anywhere positive, so, like I said, I don't know bringing it to you guys, that there is some type of ordinance.
I need to talk to Sherry at the office about ordinances for dogs.
My mother, yeah, so we've had neighbors and I actually, so I have a letter that was filed by D Dorothy DeWitt, a neighbor up the street. Um, and then we also have, I have a list right here of twelve other neighbors that have signed stating that we're concerned if you're for, of children's safety with the current electric fence not working or being properly used for two dogs, a pit bull, a bull mastiff in our neighborhood.
So what was the findings, Sherry, that you looked at ordinance and would say?
The, well, there are ordinances that you can get for dangerous animals. Um, that they would have to be caged, um, certain heights, they have to have a cage and a, a cover on top of them too, so they can't jump out. We could go through that and, and do that. I think that would be advisable. I got the letter from Dorothy and, uh, so did the township.
I have it here.
At the same town, and we, uh, I gave them to the sheriff's department. And I also had our code enforcement officer go out there. The unfortunate problem is, is there's nothing they can do until something bad happens, unfortunately. So unless we get an ordinance in place, these dogs, these, this electrical fence is not keeping these dogs on this property like it should be. So, but it's gonna take a process to, you know, adopt an ordinance, but we can do this.
So we don't have like a leash law that does.
There's a leash law.
Yeah, isn't there, like, it's a state law, I believe.
Yeah, there's a state leash law.
So if she could provide documentation, these dogs are outside the leash law and the property, and they, we have a ordinance coordinator that's gonna go out and take it down, let's just go ahead and do it.
They're saying right now, because, because they have the fence, that's good enough, but it's not.
That's, that's not a leash. I, I mean, you know, great that you have the.
Okay, but.
Okay.
Call the police, whatever.
They, they kind of said, they thought kind of the same thing, they're like, unless it goes out of the proper legal call, and then they were kind of like, then we'll take the dog away. I'm like, it's not the dog, it's the owners, it's not the dog's fault. But they show aggressive behavior. We just had cameras installed.
Is that fair of you?
What? No, it's chase work.
Oh, okay.
So, like, my kids don't even ride the bikes hard anymore, or I'm not there with pepper spray. They do, they do, what am I gonna do?
Well, if it's a village safety issue, that's never, she can talk to lawyers, she can find out what's going on. If we need to take it down, we can take it down.
Well, what about county animal control?
That's what they're basically saying. If they go through, we call, but I'm like.
Yeah, until something bad happens.
Right, until something bad happens, which we already have photo evidence of them going through the fences.
Provide that.
We have witnesses. Yeah, I can send that, I'll email it. So we have documentation, which obviously the pictures are hard to get, like other neighbors who's also a sheriff, who it's, the dogs are in his property. And I think too, when it snows, like the kids will be out and screaming and yelling, I don't think they work properly in the snow either, with the dogs with them out. She'll leave the house with the dogs out, not home.
Yeah, she's not being responsible.
And the thing, I just want a responsible, I'm a dog owner, that's all I want. It's not the dog's fault. She needs to take responsibility for that, before something bad.
Yeah, so like Mr. Baraco said, let's, let's see what we, what we can do.
I can see that a village issue, not this emergency.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, like, and I don't want to make it so all like breeds are all, I don't know, like I said, I don't know what the next steps are, but I, like, if I didn't come today to say something, if something happened, I couldn't live without them. Well, thank you for your time.
Oh, yes, no, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I'm sorry that that's happening in your neighborhood. Mr. Simeoni, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I have actually three things. Number one, um, we're spending six thousand dollars for, this is what I don't understand about the village. Okay, you spend money, just spend it. Has anybody, we just approved six thousand dollars, has anybody looked at, at any alternatives? To talk to different places to see if this stuff works, or if it doesn't, how did they fix the problem? We don't do that. We just spend money and we say, what are we gonna get out of this? We're gonna spend six thousand dollars, we're not a rich village. Where are we gonna, what are we gonna recoup out of this? Has anybody talked to the sheriff's department or the police station and said, say, how much will it cost us to put a cop here for two hours a day, and you guys can write all the tickets you want? Fifty bucks an hour, that'd be a hundred bucks a day? Nine thousand dollars, six thousand dollars goes a long way. So I'm gonna say about that. Number one. Number two, this friendship path, okay? That some boy, boy scout wanted to build for his eagle, eagle badge, let it grow over. I mean, what's, what are we keeping it for? We have enough paths. We have a path in Atlas Township, that's beautiful.
That was Angie Adamic.
We're putting up signs, we're putting up fencing and we're talking to attorneys because, let it grow. That's the best thing that could have happened to it.
Yeah.
The third thing, we spent, oh, what, I'd like to know what happened to this big, um, uh, survey that we did last year, and we spent all this money for, could somebody in the group tell me what came about with that? What, we, we got, we gathered all this information, right? What do we do with it? I'll let anybody's talk.
What survey are you speaking of? There were plenty of surveys.
The survey that went out to say, how about the village, what do you, what would you, what should we do with it?
Oh, the ma, the master, the master plan, that?
No, we sent it, we sent out, we sent out this survey, right? Uh, we had a gentleman come in, we had a meeting on it about sending out a survey, sending it to kids, would you stay in the?
Right, you're talking about the master plan survey, um.
We're talking about the master plan survey. We spent all this money, what do we do with it?
That was, that was gonna be my question. I have not, um, I haven't heard back from the, um, from the master plan people. Have you heard anything about future meetings or anything, when they're gonna pick up again?
He called two weeks ago and he's gonna be setting up meetings.
What do you think, yeah?
Yeah.
Right, we have, and he's, we have.
We've been able to have meetings for six months because of the governor's order. We've just started to have a meeting.
Have them out on the friendship path.
Or Zoom, Zoom meetings would work.
I just said, we don't, we don't do nothing with the information that we get and we spend money like it's water, you know, for no reason. I, I don't get it.
All right, with regards to the master plan, um, thing, um, the pandemic hit, we were having, we were having regular meetings. We were, we had the surveys, we had all the boards in the room.
I understand that, but again, we spent all this money for the dam, what, in two thousand fourteen, right? We had Wade Trip, that costs us money to get all this stuff drawn up, to have it, right, we have all this stuff, and then it goes into a book for our master plan, but we do nothing with it.
Right.
Nothing until the problem arises again, and then it becomes an emergency.
Yeah, timeout for one second. Um, the ma, the master plan, we haven't been able to do anything with it because of the pandemic.
No, don't, don't, don't do that. No, we're talking about two thousand fourteen, the same master plan.
No, I am gonna do that. I want you to speak, let me speak, please.
Your time's up.
Um, we're gonna get, we're, we have just been able, this is not what, our second, our second month that we've been allowed to have meetings. Not everybody is back to work yet. Um, I'm not back to work yet, um. Things are just, things are just at a sta, are, are at a standstill. I don't know how long it's gonna take. How long is the pandemic gonna take?
No, how long has the master plan that's currently in our book been out for?
At least ten years.
Exactly, exactly what I'm saying.
Right, and that's how often, that's how often they have to be up to. Excuse me, please.
It's required by law. Every ten years, the master plan needs to be.
Well, what good is the master plan if you're not doing nothing with it?
To put parks in people's yards like mine.
Whoa! My meeting.
You work for us. You work for us.
Excuse me, Ms. Moore. I am speaking. It is my meeting, my rule.
Yeah, okay.
So, when we can have meetings again with the master plan committee and get things back going, things will be done with the master plan committee. That was the whole purpose of it. We didn't go through all of it to do nothing with it. A pandemic has, and we can't do anything with it. I wish I had a better answer for you, Mr. Simeoni, but I don't.
And, and I'm not, this isn't against you or the group, I'm just, this, I'm talking about the village in general.
Right, you're talking in general, and I, and I would agree. We are very quick with, I would agree.
What I'm saying is, yeah, we do all this stuff, the master plan has been there for three, four years, so we can't blame it on a, a pandemic that they're going around for last six months.
But we're just looking at it now. That's, that's, and we have done stuff out of the master plan. We have done things in there that the master plan has said, we have, we have done things. The, um, the friendship path that you talk about, that was, that was one of the things in the master plan, maintaining of the pond, that is in the master plan. You know, things, we, we are doing things, but we don't have, like, like you said, we are not a rich village, but yet it seems like that, you know, we're very quick to spend money, and I would agree with you on that. But right now, I, I don't have an answer. So, um, anybody else, public comment?
Yeah, I got a public comment about the, uh, code enforcer. My name is James Moore, I live on, here on Street. The code enforcer stopped by last Monday, August first, and he decided to comment on the, uh, one of the three trucks that I have in my yard. And, uh, we, at first asked him to, uh, talk to the homeowners, and he denied that. He just said he needed to know who the owner of the truck was, which is me, and, uh.
How old are you?
I'm sixteen. Uh, and in the following, he said we had to the thirteenth to get rid of the truck.
What do you smell like?
He smelled like alcohol as he drove away, and, uh, I think August, Thurs, August fourth, Thursday, he also stopped by and commented while me and my brother were working on another one of our trucks, and he says, you're working on the wrong truck. So we expressed again, go talk to the homeowners of the property, and he said, all I need to know is the owner of the vehicle. He did no hesitation.
What do you smell like?
Again, alcohol. Looked like he came straight, straight from the country club, but he obviously had no hurry to talk to our parents about it or anything, so. I just want to express that, seemed like he was under the influence, he was slurring his speech, uh, just, that's it.
Hey, Sherry, can you contact, um, the code enforcer and make sure that if it's, if, if the code is being violated by a minor, to please talk with the parent? I talked with him last Thursday and told him that.
And then he came back on Thursday, and.
And we, we told him to talk to our parents, and again, he.
Driving a village vehicle.
Had a magnet, says the village of Goodrich.
The first time he got a vehicle when he came over, he talked to my brother, and he said then he smelled like alcohol, but the second time, he was in his car and we were about fifteen feet away and we could still smell alcohol as he drove away, so.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, and for the record, he does not drive a village vehicle. He just has a magnet on the side.
Representing the village.
Representing, correct, but it is not a village vehicle.
Does he?
Um, okay, any other, um, public comment?
Uh, I'm Jim Moore, I'm out here on Street. If we're gonna finally start enforcing codes, shouldn't we enforce all of them that have been violated for years and years and years? Like, you know, four buildings on your small lot, things like that.
Like, we've called several times and made complaints and nothing's ever been done. And this is the first time, like, all of a sudden, he's just writing out reports. I talked to all my neighbors and businesses.
You know, drunky drunk. Where is, is he supposed to be here?
Yeah, he's never here.
And then my second issue is, I was chatting with Mr. Wellworth over here and I heard he's got some kind of dam club. And I asked him point blank, were you appointed by the council? And he said, well, yes, and no. This meeting is the first time I've seen it on any agenda where there is actually a dam committee report, so.
It was on last month as well, because they reported on it. It's Mr. Wellworth, Mr. Simeoni, um, Mr. McCafferty, and I believe, is there one other person?
I can't remember.
And, and Matt.
Okay.
Um, and, yes, they, it was asked of them to do this at a council meeting. We all agreed that they were gonna be the, that they were, they were the ones who were here, they volunteered. So.
Is this for the structure of the dam or the hydro?
It's to, it's to take a look at the dam and give us, uh, talk to very, like Wade Trims, State of Michigan, D N R, whoever that they can find to talk to about, one, the feasibility of the dam, the options that we have of the dam, repair it, replace it, tear it down. So they're gonna look at all of those things and come up with a something. They are not a decision-making body. They are, they are just a group of citizens who want to, um.
He looks like, he's been doing that since he moved in. But if I do put in a FOIA request for all the documentation on that dam.
You'll have to do that formally. There's paperwork in the office to fill out.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, any other public comment?
I have one. And, um, Sherry, on that community development block grants, I know you said that it's for seniors. Does that money go to the township and then they, you know, the village? So how do seniors find out about that stuff?
Um, one of the teachers, uh, her, uh, her last name?
Norishen.
What is it? Norishen?
Milishen.
Milishen. She, uh, is handling the senior citizens for us and with her, I work with her, Katie also from the township works with her. Because the township also gets community development funds for the seniors. So, you know, all that money together helps the seniors in Atlas Township.
Okay, I'm just wondering how they put it out to the public. I've never seen any fly.
Well, there's only certain things, uh, that you can use community development funding on. We, unfortunately, we do not, uh, qualify, because it, it's not normally low, um, medium to low income that is not in Atlas or the village of Goodrich. So they do have this other that helps the public, public. That is not in Atlas or the village of Goodrich, so they do have this other that helps the public, public, which would be the seniors, senior citizens are eligible for community development funding, and that's how we can, uh, capture some of that funding back here into the village and into the township, because you all pay in your taxes.
Right, you know, I'm just wondering how the word gets out, about whatever programs.
Yeah, I've never seen it.
Right, like, like if, if I was a, you know, a, you know, fixed income senior, how would I know that I could get assistance with getting licenses paid for?
Maybe Dave Fleet could help.
Uh, any of the senior citizens around, senior citizens centers around here, we don't have one, but the Davidson Senior Citizen Center, Osland Township Senior Citizen Center, Burton Senior Citizen Center.
So does our money go to those other places?
No.
Okay, that's, I guess, my, I don't know how.
No, it does if we don't try to capture it, that's why I try to capture it for at least some of these things.
Okay, and then, so you captured this forty-three hundred dollars.
Yes.
So when some program or whatever is gonna go on, I guess my question is, how do seniors hear about that?
Every year, um, the, um, the community development block grant funds are handed out based on your, on, on your community's income, and so you get so many dollars. Every October, you have to have a hearing, we have to have a hearing, and, and they have to agree to let me go for this. And that therefore, then you get some recipient money, the money's released the following year for you to be able to utilize the money that's, that we're allowed to get. Well, like, I used it to fix these door, that door, I was able to get the money for that door.
Okay, so I mean, stuff like that, it isn't necessarily like senior programs or stuff like that, I'm just wondering, is there like an ad in the paper that?
It does go in the paper, yes, it does.
It does, okay, all right, that's, I'm just curious, I mean, I've heard about this before, but I've never seen anything where.
It's all put on by the county, but yes.
Okay.
I've gone on some of the trips, they put a little thing in the paper and tells you where to send, sometimes they charge you ten dollars or fifteen dollars, and they put the rest in, and if they have a bus, when the bus is full, that, you know.
Okay, so they just look like public announcements.
Once your name is on their list, they may even send you something at home.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't think they, they don't get on lists of people from the village.
Right, yeah, no, I just wondered, how does the word get out, you know?
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other, um, public comments? Okay, moving on to council comments, um, Doug, I know you, um, had mentioned something about enforcing as well.
Right, I wanted to revisit the enforcing, cause I did get a couple of calls, I received a call about the signs over in Fairhaven, I, I drove through there. Um, I did not stop and talk to anybody, uh, I just, I read what was here, and I, and I went over.